Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Select Board Special Meeting Agenda for May 1st, 2025. We'll start off with the question leaders.
The question lead is, "Is it valid in the United States of America? Here in public, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate and justice for all."
I'm going to call finance committee's order at six thirty.
Very good. The only addition to the agenda is I'll allow for some public comment tonight after two minutes per person, in case you're interested in talking. Discussion action items, FY26, contract budget presentation for approval and discussion. So Steve, do you want to tell us what you think?
Sure. So the purpose of tonight's meeting is to present the final budget to the Select Board for approval for the town meeting, which is going to be May 31st. I've been working with the financial team to get this budget prepared. We've had several starts and stops waiting to come up with the final numbers for the new proposed override. Jill has been working on this tirelessly, and we had the presentation tonight that gives you the final numbers. I'm going to let Jill start with the first slide, and then I will pick over from there. So, please, just flip it over.
Okay. To review what the revenues are, expected estimate revenue for FY26 local receipts total of $4,036,599.
Jill, will you speak up a little?
Thank you. Local receipts are expected to be $4,036,599. Property tax levy is at $35,769,352. Should the override pass, that would be an additional $2,894,400. State aid, if we're going with the governor's numbers at this point, that decision hasn't been made. $18,828.9 is state aid. Free cash total was $1,743,892. Sale of cemetery lots and conservation wetlands fees, those are reserved, they are $5,000 each, they have to go directly into their corresponding budget. Annual receipts reserve for appropriation, $1,350, again, that would go into fire. So our subtotal receipts is $61,736,52. I'm going to go with the base budget at this point. You know that the $2,894,400 is on top of that. Cherry sheet offsets are estimated at $1,373,368. Pioneer Valor Planning Assessment will be in the vicinity of $2,873. Estimate for Quavon Health District Assessment, $199,470. Cherry sheet assessments and charges are $1,924,301. Allowance for abatement, we increased to get for in anticipation of the HEROES Act possibly becoming part of our taxation situation. There's a Belchown Cultural Council request, $3,500. We have allocated $420,912 of free cash to one-time or capital items.
That's the one sixty-two hundred and thirty-four.
That is the reserve fund, cemetery lot development.
That would be the bracket for the reserve fund.
Cemetery and lot development and a substance law. So what's available for the base budget for allocatable expenses is $57,368,628. Should the override pass, that number goes to $59,763,028. And I'm going to pause here to see if anybody has anything they want to ask about the revenue side of things. Okay, moving on. So the town school, Belchown Public Schools allocation for the base budget is $33,908,107. Their override amount would be $35,544,353. Half-life assessments are $1,578,736,668, which is a reduction of around $10,800. Fixed costs are set at $8,177,536. General Government, and we can go through the government from both rather than talking about both at the same time. So general government for the base budget is $2,519,327. Public Safety, $5,738,588. DPW Highways would be $2,279,42. Human Services would be $990,73. Culture and Recreation would be $1,254. And DPW Buildings and Grounds would be $999,124. For a total of town governmental departments being $13,477,594. The override total of those departments, the town government departments, would be In addition, money has been set aside for reserves. The stabilization fund reserve is $194,267. The OPEB allocation would be $32,378. Allocateable expenses will be $57,368,628, or $59,203,108. With that, we've come to a balanced budget for the base budget. There is money left on the table on the override budget as we will be starting the firefighters in FY27 and the grant administrator.
As well as ambulance, all of those.
Okay. So some of those will be FY27, so we won't be putting that within the tax rate in FY26.
Is there any questions on the first slide before I continue?
I have a question. You're not going to be putting that into the tax rate for FY26, so you're not taking that full over right amount and spending it anywhere else. It's just not being taxed, correct?
That's correct. It's what's considered extra capacity in our tax levy, and we're not going to touch that this year. So there has been a lot of questions about the firefighter funding, and it's true that the firefighters, the ambulance, and the grant manager funding is not necessary to This was never a hidden fact. It has been discussed over many meetings. In fact, the chair was very careful to point out that that was the mandate of the town manager, was to look ahead and figure out if we needed things. We want the voters to know what the full impact is going to be. We don't want to try to tell people, well, we're going to have this much of an impact this year, this much of an impact next year. Full impact is what we want to express into people when we talk about the tax increase we know rate. It was important to us to tell people what to expect. The extra capacity is money that's not being taxed. It's going to sit in reserve so that the money's not going to sit in reserve. It'll just sit there until we are ready to budget for it, and then it'll be taxed. So that'll be a year out. And what we're hoping is that this will mitigate the need for additional overruns in the future. So it was very carefully planned to make sure that we're whole going forward.
Do you think I can ask a follow-up just clarification question? So just to be clear, then, the very first year, if the override passes, the tax amount will be slightly lower for property owners, and then the next year it'll be slightly higher, but the total amount will be lifted on?
That is correct, yes. We didn't want to create a lot of confusion, and we wanted people to know what the impact is. So we kept it as one number, that way. So on the second slide, this is the free cash distribution. As Jill mentioned earlier, we have $1,743,892 in free cash. We allocated...
So to be clear, $1.7 million, that would be generally considered on the higher side of free cash years?
Yes.
Correct. So next year, when you're having this conversation, who knows what might happen? Could be a lot less.
Well, we never know, right?
Not until it's certified.
Right.
That's an interesting question, because if you read the DLS report that recently came out, the Financial Audit, they feel that that's actually low, we should be much higher.
We're in for that free cash.
Good question. You have the annual appropriation to supplement reserve fund, $125,000, but you have it mandatory charge it as $161,500.
Other thirty comes from...
That's fine.
That's fine. That's how we do it this year and continue for next year.
So that was very explicit in the DLS report. Jill took the time to contact the DLS and get further guidance on that, and in fact, they are recommending that we use a higher amount of free cash.
What is the recommendation?
Seven, five to eight, I think it was. Somewhere in that vicinity. And I want to express a caveat about that. In order to do that, we're minimizing revenues, revenue estimates, and we're maximizing budget so we have more to turn back and less coming in, in the budget process, which makes us tighter as far as one involves. As the town council, having been here for so long, I am very uncomfortable playing with the numbers. But that is just, that's me. I am not the policymaker, and the board will have to chew on it a little bit and let me know.
And it didn't change the recommendation to have less reliance on free cash for your operating budgets. That's still okay.
Okay.
They just, they think we should have more available for other uses.
It's my understanding that the stabilization fund, in DLS's eyes, is counted towards that free cash number. So if you take that balance to the $1.7, that's where it should be, between the five to eight percent when you combine the multiple sources.
Okay, that makes sense. I mean, I think we need a longer discussion about that.
Yeah, I just wanted to put it out there.
That's an exception.
Quick to point out that's...
There's some differences of opinion, and we're going to work those out. Regardless, so the net available balance is $1,618,892. We decided to set 60% of that aside for operating expenses. That is $971,335. That amount was split 730 between schools and the town.
So for everyone's reminder, this is a direct result of the DLS recommendations about reducing our reliance on the one-time revenues. We've had this discussion two years in a row. Next year will be a similar discussion, I hope it's a similar discussion, if anyone around here.
Yeah.
And there are guidelines in place, but we still have a little too much emphasis on the free cash to operating budget.
You're correct.
To my opinion, but that's up to all of you to figure out next year.
So the remaining balance for one-time capital in the reserves is $647,557. 65% of that number went to capital, that's $420,912. I'll discuss that slide in a minute, or that list. Stabilization, we're adding $194,267. And as Jill mentioned earlier, we're adding $32,378 in OPEB. So at the bottom of the page, you'll see our current balances, our current stabilization as a percentage of the FY25 budget is 4.4%. If the base budget is put in place, we will be at 4.7% with this increase if the capital, excuse me, the override budget gets put into the base later list.
Is there any questions on that slide before I move on? No, sorry, I'm just trying to provide a little context for everything. The capital, the capital component to this year's budget, which I say Mr. Gibbons in the audience, thanks for your participation, the capital component is a much-needed piece to the overall puzzle, keeping Belchown healthy. And this is the first year that committee was able to put their work into effect and actually come back to the town with a non-political, this-is-one-you take-care-first approach. So you're starting to see the DLS recommendations, the capital, it's all starting to come together. And, you know, next year, like, the components are in place to keep advancing Belchown's healthy financial status. So, you know, a lot of good work and a lot of good fronts to bring it all together. So, thanks.
So the next sheet is the outline of base budget cuts from the proposed FY26 Level Service budgets. General Government, we're looking at a little over $16,000. Public Safety, $132,000. DPW Highways, about $76,000. DPW Buildings and Grounds, $23,000. $2300 in Cemetery Ass岩石. $40,000 Human Services. $24,000 Culture and Recreation. And then we had savings in some of our commodities this year, which was a welcome surprise. That doesn't usually happen, the gasoline, diesel, and heating oil are all down. If the override budget is put in place, we will reinstate money for general government, public safety, DPW Highways, Buildings and Grounds, Cemetery, Human Services, and Culture and Recreation, at a total cost of $198,244. So the total cuts on the town government budgets is $409,932. Proposed reinstatements are $198,244.
Steve, what is, what's being cut from Human Services?
Specifically, we've been moving out, we had...
Part of a position is to move to a...
To a grant.
To a grant. What was it?
So part of a position's being moved to a grant.
Okay.
We had a retirement and a promotion at a lower rate. That's why the reinstatement is less in the budget.
Oh, okay.
Because it's...
You don't...
You don't need to announce it.
Okay. Thank you.
And I actually think there was a second permission position that was promoted and then to a lower rate.
Okay.
Let me move on to the next slide. The increases on the town government budgets. Our largest increase were fixed costs, pensions at $148,000. Property liability and motor vehicle coverage insurance at $76,000. Fringe benefits up $241,500. Departmental, these are more specific line items that increase. Safer for firefighters. This fiscal year, we are responsible for one-third of their cost for four months. We did find that in the budget, so that's why it's not part of the overall rate, $156,000. Communication staff for six months, $20,000. That is currently being funded through ARCA, so it's moving into the general fund budgets. Contracted branding specialist, we've done a lot of work on our cultural district branding. This is actually a cultural district specialist for management. And we've done a lot with, you know, work around the Berkshire Avenue area, so we're going to keep that consulting on for another period of time to follow through and finish that effort so we can move to the next initiative. And we're going to add in our seasonal labor to the DPW Building and Grounds Department to help mow grass in the summer. And as Jill mentioned earlier, we're going to move money into the overlay account. The overlay account is an account that our assessors use for tax abatements. So if the HEROES Act or the tax workup for veterans and seniors articles pass at town meetings, those are the projected impacts and the need to cover for that. That came exclusively from money on the town side. We didn't ask the schools to contribute to that, we covered it.
Thank you.
It's been driven up.
Thank you, Steve. Could I ask a question about the seasonal labor?
Sure.
Does that also include some of our walking paths?
Yeah, Buildings and Grounds works on paths and mall lane and...
So like law and...
...cemeteries, yes.
Okay.
Steve, so I was working with our HR director on just different ideas of what we could do to help cut the insurance renewal somewhat. Did any of those come to fruition?
Yes, the...
Was it eliminating the, or restricting the DO access?
No, that's still under discussion. It's the limiting access to the...
What?
To the weight loss stuff.
Oh, the GLP one?
The GLP, correct, yeah.
Okay, okay. Do you know what the savings was for that, projected?
No, it hasn't been announced yet. So the Hampshire County Group Trust has just announced that they're implementing it, so we're still working on it. So moving on to capital, the schools do have some slides in here, we're going to be moving into those as well. So the capital list that's in front of you tonight was directly taken from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee report. These are the high priority items that they voted to move forward. We have two funding sources that we're using for these. We have the money that we allocated from free cash, $420,912. And if the override passes at the election, we'll have another $500,000. So the 11 items in front of you were directly taken from that report. The cost is in the first column. The second column is what fits into the base budget, and the third column is what fits into the override budget. I'll go over that a little bit more carefully. The first item was the locks to the Chestnut Hill Community School doors at the time of $150,000. That's in the base budget. The Javis Brook School phone system replacement, $38,000 in the base budget. Rec and Freedom Center fire suppression system repairs, that's the piping, $34,000, base budget. DPW radio system repeater. Our DPW director, Lyndon Leduc, worked with the fire department, and we were able to locate a used repeater. So that is off the list for good. As part of the regionalization efforts with Overham, that's going to be replaced in a couple of years through grants, so we should be fine to make it to that point. Wheel loader for the DPW is in the override budget at the cost of $253,500. EMS building renovations to the IT department, we were able to reduce the focal work so the base budget included, the total cost, I'm sorry, is $101,350. We eliminated some of the items in there, we basically delayed them for a future capital plan. So the base budget would include $73,912. If the override passes, we're going to put the full amount in so we can complete the project and not have to go back to the Capital Improvement Planning Committee. So it would be adding in another $27,438. In the override budget, we included $100,000 for DPW dump truck body. In the base budget, we have the Chestnut Hill Community School replacement of the heat pump, that is for the pool and the gymnasium. It's in between two walls. If everybody remembers on the Finance Committee and Select Board, when we did our building tours, we had a water leak in the front of this building and it was causing some damage on the inside. We think the entire building's going to need about $150,000 with a brick repair. Knowing that we had a limited budget, we pulled out the worst sections of that and we're going to fund that at $50,000 this year. And once we get through that, we'll have a better handle on the remaining work, and we'll go back to the CFP committee. Item 10, I did not give any consideration to, that's the second DPW dump truck body that's going to go back to the CFP committee. I think they need it, but I not only had a little bit of concern about having two dump trucks down, it didn't fit into the budget, and we have to look with what we have. So I jumped over that and I went to the fan hot area units for the police department. I think we need to make sure it was part of the heating and winter.
Yeah.
So that's in the override budget at $99,500. So we had a small balance left over of $19,652. I contacted the superintendent of schools and said, I got a little bit of extra money for you, and you use it for some additional asbestos abatement and deconstruction. He said, absolutely, we do a few questions a year. So what I also want to point out here is that, you might have heard me mention this earlier, but on the special town meeting, we have a question with some capital items in it. We received some extra reimbursement money from the state for a Veterans Affairs office that has to be spent, so it basically offset what budget money we put into those budgets. So we are going to redirect that towards two items. The first is a priority, the HVA C unit on the roof of this building did not want to start this spring. They always get these things up and running this time of year, the one day, the whole day. They put $3,000 into the unit, but they said it's not going to make for something. So we got a quote of $46,000 to replace it. So we're using the money that we got, the extra money from the state to replace that. And there's additional money left over from that, around $20,000. I'm going to put that towards Javis Brook asbestos abatement as well. So that was a welcome news from our superintendent.
Is that a partial, sorry, is that a partial abatement?
Well, he'll have around $40,000, I think. If the override passes, yes.
So it'll be a full abatement if the override passes?
It may not be enough, but he said he'll be able to find a little money here and there to do something with this adjusted focal work, and that could happen. So he was, it's not the full building. What they've been trying to do is a few classrooms a year. So this will help them achieve that goal.
A question. So this money was veterans' money? I guess that was a lot for veterans.
This money was in state aid accounts, reimbursements for certain taxes for elderly veterans and blind people. So there is an amount that they try, strive to make for each town, and they filled this into the full amount kind of last minute. And they have rules that we are able to use it during FY25.
So if I understand correctly, the, all of the, all of the people that could benefit from this, who were veterans or folks who are blind, were taken care of. And this is, I think it's about sixty thousand.
That you're talking about?
Yeah.
It's a.
It cannot be used in FY twenty-five.
So it's. Yes, it's fifty-eight thousand five hundred and three dollars. Nobody's being deprived, they've already been.
Oh, I know, I think I let you say it out loud.
Yeah, I wanna reiterate the fact that we're not taking, it's not something that we could distribute to them, it's additional funds. They've already met their limits.
Yep.
So forty-six thousand six hundred and thirty-two is going to replace the town hall air conditioning unit. That leaves us a balance of eleven thousand eight seventy-one. And if we add that to nineteen six fifty-two, we'd get a little over thirty thousand. I misspoke, I apologize. Brian said it could work with that. Let me get back to my slides.
And if that money's given to the school, it would have to be for asbestos abatement. They couldn't use it for anything else, I believe.
Uh, this, this money for special town meetings?
It's gonna be voted out.
It will be voted accordingly. So whatever the town meeting votes, when you see your language in the motions or in the articles, whatever the town meeting votes goes. So if we vote money toward the asbestos abatement, we can't use it toward fixing a seal in another building. It has to be used for what the town, because the town citizens, the town voters have the power.
Oh, I, oh, I get it.
No, I'm saying it out for, for others too, for, who might be watching.
And I wanna point out, I didn't bring that up. That's another item that was requested by our school superintendent that the CIP committee considered. So it's, it was taken out of other items that weren't funded this year or weren't high priority this year. Although I, I think it's a high priority, so. I know you had some questions about capital, did I answer them for you?
You did, thank you.
Are there any other questions about the capital before we move on? Hey, downtown public schools, the request versus their applications. We are on slide seven. And this was again mentioned earlier as part of the income expense overview. Their FY twenty-six budget request was thirty-five million five hundred and forty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-three. Town allocation, thirty-three million nine hundred and eight thousand one hundred and seventeen dollars. That left the need to reduce their level of service budget by one million six hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars. That budget will result in the elimination and reduction of upwards of thirty positions. It would also force the closure of Cold Spring School. And there's some other reductions in there as well, supplies, instructional materials, professional development, potentially the pool.
Why is the pool in there? I thought if the override didn't pass, we were gonna make a point with the increase.
Yeah, I guess the term closure might be a little misleading because they would eliminate the funding that they put into the pool, which means we would have to increase fees to then keep it open.
So then the, the meeting where you presented the fee increases, was that under the assumption that the school was cutting their portion?
That is correct, yeah, yeah. And that's still on the table. Obviously, if the override fails, we're gonna have to look at those fees because the town's gonna have to figure a hundred percent.
So you make sense to do the heat pump, though? We don't know.
Well, we need it for the gymnasium.
Okay, gotcha, so one heat pump for the pool.
Yeah. So if the override passes, there will be restoration for a lot of these things. School programs and electives will continue as they are today. Class sizes will remain similar to what they are today. Thirty positions will be preserved. There'll be more time to explore regionalization. And the closure of Cold Spring School can be more controlled. And when I talked to superintendent Cameron, he said those discussions are likely to begin this September on how that's gonna work. Oh. Yeah, I didn't read it twice, I'm sorry. It should be begin. Is there any questions on that? Do you have anything to add, Jill?
Nope, thank you.
We are coming to a close. Enterprise funds are paid by the department. Enterprise funds, for those who don't know, are budgets that are self-sustaining. They are fee-driven, the fees cover the expenses. We have three of them, the sewer enterprise budget. There's one, uh, let's see, one million seven hundred and ninety-eight thousand five hundred and twenty-three, that is balanced. Transport station budget is four hundred and twenty-four thousand five hundred and ninety-nine, that is balanced. The board voted on fee increases last week, excuse me, two weeks ago. So that budget is going to be balanced based on projections. And our stormwater budget, the utility budget is three hundred and twenty-three thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars, and that is also balanced. Uh, we also received funding from the town cable provider spectrum. This year's public education grant amount is one hundred and eighty-six thousand dollars. So that is a, a little bit of a side, it doesn't flow through, you know, it has to be sent for PC TV. So that money is in the budget and that budget is also balanced. So that's all I have, that's the budget presentation for tonight. If there's questions, I can certainly answer them. Everybody has sent a copy of the line item, if there's any questions there. Jill and I, we're kinda answering those.
Just because there's so many people on the table, I think this would be the time to allow for the public comment. So is anybody in the public that would like to make a comment tonight?
Yes, I certainly would.
Why don't you introduce yourself, sir?
Uh, roots officer, Federal Street. Number one is, I haven't heard anything is, if this override was to pass, what is the tax rate increase gonna be on a four hundred thousand dollar piece of property?
It's actually, um, the full impact is a dollar twenty-one per thousand. But as you heard earlier, that's all gonna be assessed in a year one, right? Because we're gonna wait for the firefighters and, uh, the other, I forgot the other part. We're gonna wait, but the full impact is a dollar twenty-one. So to Steve's point, rather than confusing, everybody say, hey, it's gonna be this, this year, this, this year. The following year, excuse me, it's a dollar twenty-one.
But what, what would that, give me the dollar figure, what would that would be?
A dollar twenty-one per thousand, yeah.
It'd be what?
A dollar twenty-one per thousand.
Four hundred and eighty-four dollars.
So on a four hundred thousand dollar property, your increase would be four hundred.
Eighty-four, eighty-four.
Four hundred and eighty dollar increase, huh?
The maximum impact.
Kind of something that people really wanna know. It's something that should be out here, presented.
Thank you for bringing it up, we are actually actively working on it.
Yeah.
You may have that on some little webpage hidden somewhere. Um, and that is, and but it is still very hard to figure watching this because even if this override did pass, if it passed true and went in, the school department would still be making reductions in personnel and whatever else, facilities and things going on. And at the same time, the other half of the town is gonna be making increases in people because of the way you're working your budgets out here, which is totally out of line. You're gonna start rehiring and hiring new people if you get this override. You're gonna hire new people according to your plans. And you have allocations in there for them, like assistant town administrators and things were in your budgets going in. If this thing passed, that is not in line with any budget that should be happening.
Yeah, I, I think if I understand your question correctly, you're saying that there's positions that are gonna be really created if the override passes?
If the override passes, town departments are planning on increasing personnel.
In, in what departments? Because I'm not aware.
Like even your, your deputy fire chief deal?
That's not in there.
Well, I don't know what you've eliminated piece by piece, but they were in there, police lieutenants.
They were in there, they've been taken out.
I can't tell what piece, but you're still in there. Yeah, I don't know about your assistant town manager deal.
No, that is.
There are no new positions.
No, no, I'm not, I can't tell where your little loopholes are in here.
There are no loopholes, there are no new positions. The only positions that are being funded through the override are presently in place through grant funding.
That's what you had originally, right?
They were there.
Yes, sir.
We took them out.
Okay, I don't know if you eliminated all of them. But I have another question, this is.
One second, one second. Did you eliminate all of them?
We eliminated all new positions.
There aren't any new positions.
All right, and I have another question, this is just for part of this budget dealing, is, did anything happen with this Franklin School sale?
We are repeating the sale of Franklin School right now.
It's going back out again, so it has not gone through.
We have a June ninth bid opening, so you have some time to get a bid.
Okay, so I can make some changes if anybody purchases.
We don't, we don't carry a lot of money for that building, it's a couple thousand dollars for the electricity, so it's really in that.
Right, no, I was curious, I think it did happen, but I did wanna know, but there is approximately, if the override went, a four hundred thousand dollar property would be approximately four hundred and eighty dollar increase in their tax rates, which would be good. And that's not included in next tax rates, that increase to go along with that, so people can expect a pretty good jump if it passes.
Right, this is, this is the, it's always been the select board position, next year maybe different, but like the, the select board recognized that we can't keep going back to the town and keep. So that's where they asked for the town manager and the superintendent, if that matters, to look ahead a little bit. But those are not part of this override. So the way it ends up today is there are no new positions, it's a dollar twenty, the full impact is a dollar twenty-one per thousand. Most of which, I shouldn't say most of which, not that full impact won't be dealt in the first year because some of these projects will wait till year two.
Right, and I believe you strike your fire, other, your firefighter positions in there were basically in the fire department budget before any consideration of override or not. These, they were in the original fire department budget.
Those were grant funded, those were first funded, funded four months. The final four months.
All right, any other questions?
I'm supposed to.
There you go, any other, any other comments from the public tonight? All right, so at this time, I'd like to turn over to Finance Committee for your questions of town manager, town accountant, or to vote on the budget itself, not the two and a half override pieces, but the base budget.
Great, I can put on the agenda the warrant article, my brain thinks a warrant article. So, do they have any questions for Steve or Jill about the base budget?
Bring them up, bring it in, Lawrence.
Make a motion to the legend?
The base budget.
The base budget?
It's second. Is there a second? Second, then, okay. So, um, any discussion? All in favor? I.
Very good.
So then, before we hear it back, though, I'd like to know the Finance Committee about whether they support the two and a half override.
Do you mind if the sub board approves the base budget at least once? Very good, any questions from the select board to town manager, town accountant about the base budget?
Not a question or comment, you did an excellent job, thank you. Much appreciated.
Very good, is there a motion?
I make a motion that we pass the base budget as presented.
Second.
For FY twenty-six?
For FY twenty-six.
Second.
Very good, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I don't matter, I just.
So, um. We need to take a vote on whether, and then the select board will take theirs, on whether they support the two and a half override as presented. I personally, I'm a part of them. But everybody's, you know, how you feel about it, it's how you feel about it. So, is there any questions about it, that you need clarification on? Anybody have any comments that they would like to make? Anything?
So the vote is, if the town passes the two and a half override, we're approving this budget or not.
Or the question would be, um, do we agree with a two and a half override amount in any denomination?
Do you support the two and a half override?
Support the two and a half override?
Or not?
To bring additional revenues into town to be distributed through taxation? And because that is permanent and it will be the annual thing. We didn't vote formally whether or not the Finance Committee supports the two and a half override. The actual question itself is gonna be voted on, um, at the special election, what day?
May nineteenth.
The nineteenth, by the nineteenth, when you have the election, the ballot question, that the town will decide whether or not they want to support it.
All right, can I ask a question? I think there's two different issues. One is if the override passes, and you know, if those of the National Committee supports the budget that was presented, if that line of plan.
Well, that would be, I think that would be a question that we, or a vote we would have to take when we have the fire numbers after that doubt. Like right now, to vote, it's gonna be, I know the select board's gonna also vote, do we support it in the end, the two and a half override?
Okay, because these numbers are the same numbers that will be, the base budget?
The base budget.
The override budget, if that might change. If the override passes, I mean, I think this is still the numbers we're using.
Okay. So the base budget, we all agree, everybody agrees, we all agree, that is great, I think they did a great job. Do you support the two and a half override?
Just a point of clarification, um, the, the two and a half override, if it is approved by the voters, it is permanent except through the tool of an override. So that is an option for future boards and committees and residents to consider.
It is, but it's difficult to get it.
Not saying it's not, I'm saying it's a tool, doesn't have to be permanent, but, you know, would it be permanent? Most likely, but there is a tool to.
There is, but again, it's, um, I don't think it would, it would definitely, if it passes, it's gonna, I believe, be around for a long time. I am part now, and I'll tell everybody why. Because I don't have data that the school, once the new Javis Brook School was voted down, I don't see any data where the school looked at all its resources and tried to reallocate its facilities and cut administrative and other costs, potentially by already eating most of the way through the process of closing Cold Spring and moving students. I don't see any of that work having been done. I see, now we just want the override. And I don't think the taxpayers in this town, or any town for that matter, should have to carry the additional taxation burden because nothing was done for a year. I think the closure of Cold Spring and moving of those students to another school, school would really have a much more significant impact on production and their budget needs. And maybe any, and maybe any additional administrative supports that could be combined by having it be from two schools to one school. So I think there could have been a lot of work done, I'm not assigning blame, just in my professional opinion of forty-two years of finance person. I don't see any of that data. Firefighters, I would need to see data that would show me that adding them like we are would be a cost savings to the town. The town, the town is going to be expending that amount. How, if the town is going to be expending that much money by taxing the community members to do so. How is that going to be a cost savings or a benefit to the town? Like what are they getting for that additional taxation for that? Um, the capital expenses, I would be in support of, because I've been around for a long time in this town government, and too many times, I've seen a hundred thousand dollar capital project turn into a quarter million dollar capital project. Because we didn't take, we didn't take the proper steps when we first needed to change. So including a parking lot out here, including all, you know, all kinds of things, I've seen double and triple in costs. So I think wise to invest dollars for capital improvements and replacements, because we're going to save, that would be a cost savings by doing that upfront. Like we're doing it as soon as we notice, it's going to cost us less money, it's going to last that much longer, what have you, so that would be favorable. But the school, um, I don't think, I could be in favor of that, I could be in favor of the firefighters who want to be.
Can I respond?
Sure.
Um, so I'm kind of disappointed to hear you talk about the schools again, because we have had this conversation numerous times. So if the override doesn't pass, we're going to be forced to close cold spring, and we have discussed at length what those impacts will be. So we're going to lose languages, we're going to lose a whole set of teachers, class sizes are going to increase. So when Javish didn't pass, we still couldn't close cold spring, because we educationally don't want to put those impacts into place if we don't have to. The budget situation would force that, so we have had to look at that, but I mean, the idea that we didn't, because Javish didn't pass, and now we didn't look holistically at what we could do. How can we do that? We couldn't, we have policies in place that dictate what our class sizes are. We could not close a building and maintain that class size policy.
Are there state policies or, um, are.
These are school committee policies. Correct. But, but, I mean, educate, we, it is our responsibility to do what's educationally best for the students. And, and class sizes of thirty at the elementary level is not what's educationally best for our students, that is our party.
I do think thirty is a bit of a overstretch, I want the class size, you brought it to.
But we're also talking about losing languages, we're talking about losing a year of arts, the impacts, I mean, we've outlined these impacts at length.
I still can't support it, not, um.
But I do want to just be clear that it's not just, oh, close cold spring, and it's easy and it's fine. There is a list of impacts that we have discussed at length, so I want everybody to be clear on that, because you're making it sound like we could just simply close cold spring, and it would be easy peasy, and we have not done that, that's not the case.
It would be, closing cold springs would be a significant cost savings, um, both facilities, maintenance, and potentially some administrative costs which could be then combined. However, I do understand that being said, that it certainly wouldn't be a whole ask, but it would be a, a good portion of it. And I just, um, I think that I'm a fan in general of living within my means, what, this is what I have, this is how I, this is how I spend, this is, you know, so I, you know, my entire life, professionally and personally, ended within my means. I have X to spend, I figure out a way to maximize that and get everything I need, and stay within X, and I think that, um, it's important, I get it's hard, it changes.
It's not just that it's hard, the educational impacts on our students are something that we have to keep in mind, and that's, that is, also goes into that equation for us.
I get it, I get it, I still can't support it, but I get it, um, and who knows, maybe I'm the only one that doesn't support it, but, um, I, I just, you know, for all the reasons I always.
But I just wanted to make it clear.
No, I get it.
Thank you.
Does anybody else on the finance committee have anything to comment, to differ from my opinion, to add to it, to?
I'm still trying to understand the purpose of our vote, going to this town, is this just a formality?
So it's a formality to, so our, our, the finance committee's goal is to advise the constituents of the town on, based on our financial expertise. Do we feel that, um, how the monies are being spent is that going to have a positive or negative impact? So it's almost, um, like I think it's your responsibility to just take the formal hook, so the town, let's say, we don't care what the finance committee deals, or what have you, but at least no one can come back and say, you should have made, you know, this is not happening, how can we not get the formal?
Yeah, so it's a, it's essentially a committee, uh, support or not support of the concept in general. Very good thoughts.
Anybody? Nothing. Do we want to make a motion?
Well, I have one question, because I still. I still want to understand the, the impact being over two years, so we essentially, um, voting to raise the tax rate for permanently, for two years, or that only half of it will impact this, or there's a percent, well, I'm trying to understand, like.
So increase, if the two and a half passes, it increases, that's a permanent increase. So every year, that additional taxation will stay on there unless and until it is voted by town to remove that override, which it's very difficult to have that done once it passes. And so there's a portion of that, um, what, twenty percent, thirty percent, that won't be expended the first year. Um, even though, so you won't, but then the second year and subsequent years, it will be.
So the town will collect the revenues, hold on to them.
No, they won't collect the revenues, they won't, the first year, the, um, bill rate would be less than five hundred thousand, not about two point six million. So, but it's in there, because it'd be year two, to be, make it look very transparent, like Steve said, the year two and subsequent, it would be broader context.
And that's because we don't need it all in that first year.
Correct, because we're not going to collect, you know, put money into taxation or, or request taxation of our community. So we're going to create a revenue for next year. Then maybe this year, there's going to be a two point six override, only five to fifty-nine, five hundred sixty thousand dollars would be, is the piece that will be helped until, so it would still be a two thousand one seven. It would still took, uh, two point one million in additional taxation this year.
It's creating a basket, something like that.
And then it allows you to capacity. Yeah, that's essentially our, we, right, tax, to that capacity.
Right, so, I mean, to me, that sounds like we're pre-voting on a decision for twenty-seven. This year, so we don't have to go back.
Correct, yeah.
Correct, I, I get it, I get what you're saying.
It's, it's looking into the future, because we're, the town is probably not going to move forward with the override for years, anytime in the near future. It's, it's kind of a big, the town.
We've been through thirty-two years of a budget without overriding. Thank you, that needs to be.
And how many years was that in effect until it was reversed?
It has not been reversed, and the bottom line is, we look forward for extensive jackal and tax, so that it would be hopeful for another thirty-two years to maybe have the taxes. That's why the firefighters are in, I have the financials, and just my fire fighters.
Right, and that data, like that data, um, just data in front of me, like numbers, no motion, no nothing, no whatever, just coming out with data to support it. And now, you know, that's a little bit different, but I'm still, yeah, I'm personally, I'm not over, you know, I just don't believe, I think we need to look at alternate ways, um. I do, I think we have X one dollar, I think the taxpayers of the town pay enough money in taxes already, and, um, school, you know, the number of kids coming up in the school has greatly decreased. I think it's three hundred and one kids, uh, age zero to five, and then there's like five hundred and something, five to nine, so those are rapidly declining. You know, there's our base age seems to be on forty-five to fifty, um, for the town, which will lead to a bigger community, and so I just, I, I can't support it. But that's fine, I think everybody else in the world can.
I'm going to call your attention to the screen. These are FY '24 numbers, we're currently wrapping up FY '25, so this is the most current fiscal year. Um, since I remember six call volume, uh, the six firefighters, you can see an increase of five thousand fourteen calls, three hundred and two of them are ambulance transports. Ambulance revenue has increased five hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars.
So that square, so the ambulance revenue's increased by five hundred and thirty-one nine thirteen, and that money directly offsets operating costs of the fire department, PMS. Why would we need additional money to fund those positions?
Our, the ambulance does not pay for the full fire department, the, I mean, the ambulance receipts, I should say, do not cover the full fire department.
So who gets that five hundred and thirty-one nine thirteen oh eight?
That money goes into a reserve account, so we vote, that million three that we're voting, giving to the fire department's budget, that's on, if it makes sense, comes from there. We estimate as best we can what's going to come in, so, so putting that number together, and we make sure that we don't overestimate what's going to be there. There's not money sitting there at the savings account by any stretch of the imagination, it is just the funding, the bills, the bill payments go into that fund, and then we vote that from that fund into the fire department. It does not cover the fire, full fire. It never will.
Right, so, 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 like, these are firefighter, you might get like four, you're something thousand dollars, the annual wage for those six firefighters. And that's just on wage, how do we then, like, I don't understand why, if we're saying the increased revenue of 531,913, plus decreasing the overtime by 75, 741, I don't understand why we would need additional, and I can't figure this out.
This is like, like, we had estimated.
If it was estimated.
And of now, my 31,913,08, what is actually coalescing out of that? Because the revenue, the billable revenue may have increased by that number, but what percent of that is actually?
Well, that's the problem, because Medicare and Medicaid don't pay.
Right, that's the problem. That, that is a problem, right, so if we, you, you set the fire.
So maybe, maybe we can stop both people from tuning around Medicaid and Medicare.
Well, I mean, this, this is, this is kind of the, the same conversation we have year after year after year about fire AMAs.
I feel pretty strong with that.
And we are a service industry.
I would offer that this particular topic, I've seen the response times go much quicker. As opposed to calling the mutual aid from surrounding communities. Or take care of their game.
Well, it shows, it shows that the revenue generation through additional receipts.
Even more, the revenue side.
Or, or to, to what Steve just said about Medicare and Medicaid, if, if we are billing, and they're not coining up the money, we're still delivering the service and we're not getting, we're not getting the payments for it. So, you, you know, I, I think this is what Jill's trying to say, is like, we're budgeting, like, we think we're gonna get this much, but that's not actually what we get, and we can't, we can't, we can't, you know, I don't know, knock on the door and. Well, there's gotta be a historical trend that says of the increased, of the receipts, 60% are realized in natural revenue, or some percentage of that, to not think this is just the increase of the receipts, but this is actually, so we increased about 550,000, yet we're really only gonna realize about 55% of that. Does that make sense? Like, is there definitely historical trends, or this isn't anything where they're not like?
By the way, it's not just our town.
It's every town, I get it.
Well, I can tell you, Joe and I look at this, with the fire chief, over and over and over.
And it's not mine.
Over you.
If, if we lose six firefighters, we need over 12,000 hours of coverage, it's gonna come out of overtime, do the math on that. Or we're not gonna have the ambulance if we didn't need it.
The only thing is what we've invested already, right?
Right.
That'd be my thing, so we invested so much already with that grant, now let's say we get rid of six firefighters, this town hasn't slowed down. Are we not gonna keep developing state schools? So now we're gonna rehire and then train, who knows how many fully out of our pocket. That's.
Out of that, the fastest growing segment of the population is the over 50 population.
Right, it is.
Right?
I get that, I'm just confused because if the data isn't showing that we're getting all this additional cost savings through revenue of the, and savings on overtime, why do we actually, which exceeds?
He estimates, our estimates, what we actually collect is less, because Medicare and Medicaid don't pay the full amount.
So you know what amount, what percentage of the money we actually collect?
We don't. Not on, on the top of our heads. Um, that's a question for the, the fire chief and or staff. And I just think that going on and on about it at this moment, not because we don't have the information.
No, I get it.
Can be, is.
But that wouldn't be my base question.
We have to provide. If you, yeah, we have to provide the service of firefighting and AMAs and, um, whether or not, whether or not we have the additional firefighters that we already have on staff for the last almost three, two and a half years, will make huge changes in, that's kind of my.
And so to clarify, if the two and a half doesn't pass, then we won't keep these firefighters.
Um, if the two and a half doesn't pass, my priority is going to be public safety and essential services. That means I will do everything I can to keep these firefighters and our essential services intact. When we talk about public safety and essential services, we're talking about police, fire, DPDW, our general government in town hall that runs our financial offices, because without them, we can't pay the firefighters. Which means we're left with looking at the library, the senior center, and recreation. What parts of those are essential and non-essential. But when it comes to life safety, we have to protect that. So yes, there's been a lot of questions, well, if this fails, we're just not, we're, we're not gonna get rid of the firefighters anyway. I don't know if we can save six of them. But I will save every one of them I can before I cut, or try to protect other departments, we have to have those animals. If you get down and you run short of money and you can't, and you're looking to support, or you have to do your public safety, and that part, you're gonna have to support them, you're not gonna go buy dump truck bodies or something else out of there. You've got, money's gonna go into public safety for assessing, you'll have to transfer or rearrange your finances.
What I just wanna clarify is if we start leaving away at our non-essential services, those are our revenue producers. And then we're just exacerbating this entire problem.
Correct.
So is there any further discussion from the fire AMAs committee? The two and a half override, discussion, questions, anything?
I think the only thing I'm, I'm not entirely worried is, I understand the need for creating capacity, but I also think that, um, that means that the town and schools don't want to come back next year with, you know, what they've done to reduce, like, we're giving a two-year big bump, so that there's no.
But it's, it's, it's permanent, so every year, and for every year, it's permanent.
Excellent.
So every year that tax rate would stay, plus salaries would come would go up. So, um, at 484 for a $400,000 house, you know, next year it might be 526, and a year after that it might be 590, and a year after that it might be 640. Yeah, I guess it's every year.
Steve, what are the, what are the only components that are actually going to weigh into year two? It's the firefighter, it's the, the grant manager, and the fire manager.
Grant. The grant researcher.
That's the only part that's, that's due to. Let's go the way that we did here, one, two, three.
So, but, but I will just also add onto that, is that this is just a level service. So there, there's some need to be continuous improvements in the, for the budget, like, there's some need to be this continuous refinement and looking for savings, because inflation's not gonna stop, right? And salaries are gonna keep going up, right? So this is not like one and done, like, the work is still gonna happen at the school level and at the town level to make sure that we're solvent, moving forward. This is just to give us some added relief, especially with like the hurt maintenance, I mean, that is huge. We've put off maintenance, that our buildings are so, so long.
So I'd like to call your attention to the screen one more time. Again, fiscal year 24, that's, that's the last fiscal year that we have. You can see from fiscal year 20 to fiscal year 24, the increase of revenue. You can also see what's, what we call allowable charges versus selected. If we look at this next portion of the slide, it's, it tells the full story. What's charged and what Medicare and Medicaid allow for billing? We're getting pennies on the dollar.
So, I mean, Medicaid, you won't get anything on the dollar.
You're right.
So it's a reduction of like 16 and a half percent loss share.
Medicare and Medicaid comprise 74% of our calls.
Right, so it's interesting what we did get, so the reduction from the allowable charges and the receipts is 16.16% for the 24. So a good portion of those, that 500, um,
Are, are.
E3 should be.
Our mutual aid costs have significantly grown, and that's the difference between a 10-minute response and a half-hour response. I have no doubt that if the ambulance could logo response and develop the phone, you will get top-quality care if you are still alive.
I get it, Steve, I get it.
The data's here, and that's what Jill and I are taking to work at.
So are you gonna take a vote?
Yes.
Oh, I doubt these questions have drawn. One, three. Um, so anyway, uh, I motion to vote, um, I don't know how to phrase it, uh, I make a motion, and we took a vote on to approve the two and a half override number. Is there a second?
Sorry, can you?
Okay. So, all in favor of approving the 2.6 million dollar, whatever it is, override number?
Would vote yes.
All opposed. I say I'm opposed. Steve? Opposed, Angela? You're opposed, and Mike?
I'm gonna say yes, as a bandage.
Okay, so there's three in favor, two in favor, supporting the two and a half override, and three opposed.
Very good, thank you. So just so we're clear, you're, you're not gonna vote tonight on the override budget, you're gonna wait until the 19th? Because you're voting on the override, you just voted on whether or not you would support two and a half override, 2.66.
Just to pull something over.
But are you going to vote on the actual proposed override budget tonight?
Well, once that number becomes available, there will be warrant articles that we will individually vote on.
Okay.
And so we will then individually vote based on what the number is off the ballot, on each warrant article, um, whether we're in support of that warrant article on the base budget or on the override. Does that make sense?
Shouldn't we vote on this though, just to bring it to you?
Well, we're only gonna present a budget that can be executed without the override, depending on the passage or failure.
Right, so if Jill provides the warrant articles, and they have, and the ballot question has included the override amount as outlined here, at that point, we would then have the opportunity to say, we agree with that number for that department, or we don't, um.
If I may.
Yes, may.
The, the only way, it's okay to vote on that tonight, because if it passes, it passes, we already passed the original, the base budget version. So this is just if the pass is in the ballot.
Well, so I, I, I don't wanna call that vote, because it's, it would be individual warrant article that that meant we would be voting on whether or not we support the dollar that's associated with that individual warrant article based on the department after the select board decision on, whatever they.
I think they're saying the same thing.
It would.
Do I really?
They would have.
Do I really need to comment?
Well, I'm.
I'm clear.
So, yeah.
I, I can surprise you too, what did you vote on?
So we voted that we do not support, sorry, we voted, um,
Two to three.
Three against, and two in favor of just our general support of the proposition two and a half override question.
Okay.
Based on our financial expertise and having the feel that it impacts the town.
So three against and two.
Correct.
All right, turning to the select board, um, talking about the proposition two and a half override and the select board's, uh, board's position on the topic. Uh, I think probably be good to give everyone's, weigh in, what you, what you want to say about, so we can go back. Yeah, just the base budget, probably move to three. Yeah, that's what they just talked about. No, we already voted on eight. Did you vote on that?
Great, so.
Just the base budget, so bye. Uh, so talking about the two and a half override piece, um, what do you, any thoughts?
Uh, sure, I would like to contribute, but I wanted to say, in addition, um, thinking about, we're just looking in detail at ambulances and services that are required in our town, the override is going to be able to help support many of these services. But also, excuse me, I'm thinking about the schools and how we have talked a good deal about the population decrease. Something we're not talking about is though the student numbers may have declined, but the needs have increased significantly. And we have to serve students with what they need, and special ed services are very expensive. And not only are they best practice, they're actually state mandated. So even with the best of attempts to pre-plan, this is still a growing need and will continue to grow. So the schools do need the additional funding, and I do believe we have the best of agreements from the school committee that they are actively already working to plan for closure of cold spring. And they are also getting to plan in case the override doesn't happen for cataclysmic changes within the schools. So hopefully, if this override passes, it will give them time to thoughtfully and carefully in a very psychologically thoughtful way to plan for the closure of cold spring. So I, I, I don't think it's any question that I'm very much in support of the override, because it's going to support our schools, it's going to support the services in town, and it's going to support our structures. We do have deteriorating buildings that we need to begin to immediately assess and repair. And though this override is going to be helpful, it's not going to solve everything. I, I wish in ways we could have asked for more, but we can't, so this is what we have, and I'm very much in support of it.
Nicole?
Um, so I actually wrote something, I think I'm gonna chalk all of you. Um, so I did a lot of soul searching this week, and I've decided that I am going to throw my support to the override as a public official. Um, the thoughts and the opinions in my household are different though, and that's fine. Um, but I have a different role in this override. Um, no matter what side we come down on on the override, as one of the leaders in this town, I'm gonna have to contend with the fallout whichever way it goes. So there was a quote that I heard earlier this week from our, um, one of the candidates that's running for select board. Um, and it really resonated with me. She said, do I wanna be right, or do I wanna be effective? And that's a no-brainer for me, I wanna be effective. And so the first step for me is to ensure that I get a seat at the table with the schools. And so what does that mean? So a lot of people probably don't realize this, but myself, Whitney, our town manager and representatives from the school, we have been having smaller, um, strategic meetings, um, and we've been having them since the, the vote on Javish failed. And the purpose of those meetings was to talk about where do we go from here, what are next steps? And I'm really appreciative to our chair, because he placed trust in me to allow me to be a representative um, from the select board for these meetings, and I wanna continue to work with superintendent and with school committee in those strategic meetings. Um, but in order to do so, I have to forge a relationship, I have to build trust with you, and I have, we have to foster transparency both ways. Um, and it, it needs to include some, some hard choices about our spending as well. If I don't get on board with this, I'm not being effective. And for me, the end goal is financial stability for all of us. So I'm thinking ahead, I'm focused on the long game, for that reason, I'm gonna adapt, and I'm gonna show my support for the override.
Lisa?
Um, as vice chair of the select board, I did not come to my decision regarding the prop two and a half override lightly. I recognize it's not a perfect plan, if you are, but here we are. Our, our town departments, especially our schools and public safety services, are increasingly under financial pressure. We're facing hard choices and doing nothing would mean falling further behind in meeting the needs of our residents. It is for these reasons that I'm voting to support the prop two and a half override. In the end, it's not this symbolic vote by the select board that matters most. It's the wisdom and the will of Belcher Town's residents. That's who will decide the path forward, and I will respect and abide by that decision.
Jenny? You're gonna make me super. I don't know if I can speak right now. I'm just gonna say that loud. Um, I think I said, uh, I think everyone in this room knows that I'm supportive of the override. Um, and I also, like, it was a journey to get here, I will say that also, you know, listening to a lot of folks and thinking about, um, how we got to this place, and we're not unique, um, and attacking across the state. And, you know, as days go by, and the climate at the federal level and the local level and our surrounding communities, like, I don't think we have a choice.
Very good, thank you. Um, so I was on this board, I, I started off as a hard no on the question, for a lot of different reasons. Uh, but what the public gets to see is how the board continually evolves, continually adapts to new information. We, we look at the totality of the town, and for me personally, um, I don't think the number is an over ask. I don't. If it was an over ask, uh, I'd be, I'd be probably the first or maybe the third one to say no. But it's definitely not an over ask. And when you look at the good that the entire bill does, um, I think it makes, I think it makes a lot of sense. We're covering a lot of ground in a short amount of time. And the reality is, is that between what the school were asking for and the rest of the programs, we actually have a chance to like fix a lot of what's going on in Belcher Town with the buildings and the capital and all the good stuff. So to me, uh, there is no such thing as a perfect number, I learned that on listening night, I forget the resident that said it out loud, but she was right. There is no such thing as a perfect number. Um, I think this number does a really good job, and it's not under asked. So rather than come back next year to the community with, um, which would probably be a bigger number than even this year, in my opinion, but, you know, next year, you'll have to see. I think if the town patches it now, there will be quite a few number of years before the town asks to consider this question again. So for those reasons, uh, I would also vote yes. So it sounds like we have consensus, is there a motion? Somebody?
Uh, so I move that the select board officially support the override at, what's the number, 2.894.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? All right.
Hi.
Five votes.
Can I just make a quick comment?
Of course.
Um, Marilyn Decker, Grammy Road, uh, one of the things that I haven't heard in any of these discussions, and I'm retired, I'm on a fixed income, is our property values depend on the quality of the schools, the quality of the town services. So $500, I don't wanna, you know, $500 is $500. If my property decreases by 5%, I'm in big trouble. So, um, I just wanna thank you for, I watched your evolution on this, and I, I wanna thank the board for being so thoughtful.
There's a gentleman in the back row that would probably like to take a video of that speech to you.
Or three.
Um, all right, so we also tackle the, um, the override budget question.
So I vote we approve the override budget question.
Second.
Any further discussion? Uh, the only point I'll make here is if it doesn't pass, obviously, that's not the budget that takes effect, it's the base budget.
Right.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Five votes. Questions from the press? All right, number five. Yep.
Second.
Select board, all in favor? Aye. Seven fifty-six.